Let's do this to the fight of the United States of America. We consider the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Reiden.
Here.
Earl.
Here.
Ewing.
Here.
Hardin.
Here.
Knox.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Minutes of the previous meeting. The red. So fruit. Just go off to.
One million five hundred sixty-nine thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and eight cents in all funds. Two hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents in the general fund. Because mine is wrong. I'm gonna do this again. One million five hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents in all funds. Two hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents in the general fund. I guess that was the last one.
And these are the additions?
Yes, we did have additions today. We should all shut up coffee, but it's not available there.
Bill, red, resolution seventeen, dash five, dash one, was adopted on motion right.
Earl.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Ewing.
Here.
Yeah.
Hardin.
Yeah.
Knox.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to the guest section. Andrew Augsberger.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Andrew Augsberger. I've been assistant prosecutor for the last twenty years, and I'm ready for to become the next judge of the Augles County municipal court. Imagine the last twenty years I've been dedicated myself to serving the people of Augles County as one of your assistant prosecutors. I've worked my way up. I've handled every kind of prosecution in the county. From juvenile delinquents, municipal court prosecution, mainly OBI's. Been handling the abuse, penalty neglect case for children's services for almost the entire twenty years. In the last six years, I've been handling mainly felony cases, including some of the worst, the sex abuse cases. And most recently, the murder case from Unniopolis when Charles Hicks was murdered by the folks up in Lima over some drug issues. My wife and I have been living in Wapakoness since nineteen ninety-eight. We're raising our three kids. We've been investing in the community. I coach rec soccer for Wapakoness Soccer Club. And my three kids also are right now attending Holy Rosary School in St. Mary's. If you have any questions for me, I appreciate your vote this coming November, as I'm running for this report. But I wanted to start introducing myself around the area, so you can start seeing the face of a person who's been working so hard in this prosecutor's office. I've also represented the county on civil matters, given legal advice to county commissioners, the various town boards of trustees, and different governmental agencies, board of elections. So I've done about everything I can for the prosecutor's office, except for what the elected prosecutor does above me, which is administrate the office. I don't have any financial responsibilities for the office in that. But I've done about all I can as a prosecutor. Matt has referred to me as this go-to guy in the office. And that's why I plan, I plan still using that work ethic, what I've done as an assistant prosecutor, as an ex-judge at the municipal court. You have any questions for me, I'll take those before I sit down.
Who's the judge now?
Judge Herman is retiring after thirty-six years. I spent about fifteen, the first fifteen, most of my duties were prosecuting the misdemeanor court. I handled some felonies, and then in two thousand fifteen, I became the senior assistant prosecutor. And that's when my duties mainly were on the felony end. And then unfortunately, then went back, you end up getting something more serious crimes. Any other questions?
I've served on jury in Judge Herman's. I'll say if I would be called to serve on jury.
Yes.
You get voted in, would that be a conflict of interest with me being on council here?
Probably only if it's a Waynesville. If Chief Mott arrests somebody, then that might be a conflict of interest. But if it was a minster case, probably not.
Okay.
I've actually had police officers from other agencies serve on juries. So if you're from, I had a Bremen copy on a Wapakoness crime. So that was not in conflict.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Any other questions? It was nice to meet everybody, and you'll be seeing a lot more of me in the next five months as I begin this run. But I wanted to come out and start introducing myself to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to put a faith on something when we go vote.
Yes, and I got a German name. I'm not related to the Augsburgers really, I'm bluffed. Mine are more towards Burn, Indiana. The Augsburgers are Mennonites. But I do have a, I don't have any greats. One of my great-grandfathers married an Amish woman, so that is my lineage.
I was raised Mennonite, and the church that I went to in Lima, there was Augsburgers there.
My grandfather was born in Alida. His father, he married Alida, and my grandmother's Wapakoness. I know around the area.
He would be the first Amish judge if you were.
But now I'm Catholic, so. Which only, I found out Father Pat from St. Joseph's at Wapakoness has a grandfather who was Christian Augsburger, but he's from Butler camp. And I, both of us have a Christian Augsburger who was a Mennonite minister, and now both Catholics at St. Joseph's. A little ironies in the world.
Okay, let's go to committee reports. Okay, police report.
Before I start my official report, I just want to let you know that I have worked with prosecutor Augsberger pretty much my entire career. He's been great for, from a law enforcement standpoint. I support his run for judge. I hate to see him leave the prosecutor's office personally, but I think he'll do well, well as a judge. Get started on my report here. It's a little bit lengthier than what I originally had provided you. I apologize for that. We had some late arrivals, so I'll get through this as quickly as I can. Some tall grass notices have been issued to various residential properties in the village. This year, we actually had less properties in violation than previous years, which is a good thing. Most of the properties didn't though after the notices were mailed. However, we do have a couple vacant properties that had to be moved by the village. On Friday, June twenty-third, the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure will be coming to Waynesville. You guys have some brochures there that you can look at. Approximately fifteen hundred to two thousand bicyclists will be touring the area on a preset route. Part of that route comes up Waynesfield Road north through Waynesfield. The cyclists ride at their own pace, so they will be in the area throughout the day. There's a one-stop scheduled at Waynesfield Goshen Schools from seven-thirty a.m. to one-thirty p.m., so that's when we expect to see the bicyclists coming through. This is the twenty-ninth year that GOBA has held this week-long bicycle adventure. But I think it may be the first time they've actually come to Waynesville and had a stop here. So we have, I believe we're gonna try to get a banner to welcome them, and there's gonna be some other signage that's put up throughout the village and maybe outside the village, you know, pointing them in the right direction and welcoming them into town. They'll come up southwest Minster Street, northwest Minster to the school, and then go on to the north, I believe, up to Amherst Road. I think there's maybe a map inside that pamphlet there that talks about that. But this year's route actually starts in Finley, then it goes to Tiffin, Upper Sandusky, Beaufouton, Russell's Point, Waynesfield, Kenton, and then ends back in Finley. It's a week-long bicycle adventure. They start on Monday morning, and we'll see them on Friday morning here in town. And I've talked about that. The lunch stop at the school is actually being operated by the Waynesfield Goshen Athletic Boosters and the Waynesfield Goshen Youth Sports Association, the WGYSA, which is formerly known as the Ball Association. And Brett Purcell is the booster contact, if anybody has any questions for that. He's also the athletic director at the school. And Brian Shaw is the representative on the WGYSA side. But they, they're actually, they've gotten local churches to donate items to be sold to help raise money for the two entities. And local businesses are being asked to donate items for sale during that time period from seven-thirty to one-thirty as well. They'll be set up in the cafeteria and the middle school gym, so if you're in the area and want to go up, I was told that anybody can purchase, you know, concession-type foods up there, or if you just want to go and talk to bikers, or see why they're crazy and want to ride six hundred miles or whatever in the week, then you can certainly do that. But the money's gonna be split between the two entities, and the WGYSA has put a significant amount of money into our park and the ball fields and things like that, and so they're trying to generate money to help further that cause. Yesterday, we had WG's graduation. Everything went well. They requested my presence there to just make sure there weren't any issues, and everything went fine. So I believe they had thirty-eight graduates that went through, so everything went well there. The click or ticket campaign kicks off today. Every year around this time, I present this to council. We participate every year in enforcing the seatbelt laws, which we do year-round anyway. But this is the federal government's way of providing extra attention to working and other safe driving practices. So that runs now until, I believe, June the third, so we're doing that. And lastly, we've taken some different phone calls in reference to some scams happening in the village. Mostly by phone, some mailed scams, but one of the common ones, I got a phone call actually from Becky today regarding IRS calling people. The IRS will never call anybody. If anything, they'll send a certified letter to you. But if you get an automated call that asks you to call an eight-hundred number or anything like that, just hang up the phone. It's a scam, because the IRS, they're not staffed enough to make phone calls to people and that type of thing. So I actually got the same call, only it was from a live person a couple weeks ago, and they threatened to call local law enforcement and have me taken to jail if I didn't give them money. I asked them to please do that, and he then started speaking to me in a different language and hung up on me. So those scams are out there. We're seeing the IRS publishers clearing house. Different, I mean, they run the gamut, but if, you know, a good rule of thumb is if you have caller ID and you don't recognize the number, just don't answer the phone.
I had several telling me my student loan was.
Yes. About every other day, I get somebody saying, my credit card balance is ready to be expanded, and I don't even have a credit card. So, you know, they'll use any method they can.
So you should pay us too long.
So that is all that I have.
Oh, on SGOBA, for several years, we had a local man here from Wayne. He used to ride that Bob show, did it for probably ten years. He had quite some experience as he was.
Yes, they've ridden all over Ohio in recent past. They've gone through like Minster, New Bremen, and Knoxville, and they've run that route. Looks like they're moving north and east now, and hopefully, you know, they have a good experience here, and they come through here, you know, for years to come. It's nice having south and northwest Minster Street repaved and everything. It's a good road for them to experience. I know, I think we're checking in to get the American flags on the light poles, so that, you know, provides, you know, a nice corridor for them to come in with the banners that are already posted, so Jill might be able to speak to that a little bit. I don't need to throw you into the bus there. I know we're looking at quotes, getting phrases. Yeah, so if we could get that done, you know, before June, it'd be nice to have them form a memorial there, too. And we'll see what we can do there, and just, you know, welcome them to town. You never know, get some good people drive through here. They might want to relocate here permanently, so.
Hopefully, you don't give any of them speeding tickets out of the box.
They're riding faster than twenty-five miles an hour on their bike. I might just give them an award.
Clint Neil passed the sheriff one time fifty-five, passed the Dairy Queen.
Some of those speed bikes can get going, but kudos to them if they can do that.
Mayor's court report, five hundred eighty-three dollars was pumped into the general fund. Go to the old business.
Can we talk about this thing here, this ordinance?
Sure.
I don't know if there's, I like to see a show of hands, and if anybody in here has read both of these, every word besides me.
I did.
Man.
After I talked to you, did I do?
There's a thing that really jumped out at me on that, and I showed it to everybody that I could talk into reading it and everything. And there's some of this stuff in here that makes me wonder if it's even constitutional. One part back here. Got high right here on, the pages aren't numbered, but it says, "Seven days after notice is served in any manner provided by the Ohio Rules of Civil Procedure for Service of Summon." No, that's not it. Anyway, it said, what it says is that they can come and inspect your property, the Property Maintenance Committee, which I don't know who that is. And it says in here, there's a place that it says any, can anyone think of the word I'm searching for? The people in the good, high-ups in the community are, any representative of the city can, if you're in violation, that any representative of the city can come on the property and inspect everything. I just don't, I don't really want to be any part of, you know, saying anybody works for the city can just go on anybody's property, go through the car, sit near the window, buzz it out, and say, we're gonna search everything. Then I had a couple people ask me, who's behind this? I just assumed it was. Well, the representative would be the.
Yeah, can I speak to that?
Yeah.
The Property Maintenance Committee, three council people. It's a committee, just like the street committee, like the water sewer committee, whatever, parks committees. So that'd be three council people. And this came about at our, so you can tell your constituents that the solicitor's office actually brought this to us to update the ordinance that was passed in two thousand. Some of the laws changed with regards to the current ordinance that's in effect. So they brought that to us, because I'm the one that enforces the current ordinance. They had emailed it to me, which is why I presented it to council. So it came from our solicitor's office. I'm not smart enough to draft all this.
A lot of these are based off model forms that are in the code of village ordinances, and so these things have been thoroughly reviewed and vetted.
I had someone not connected, didn't live in town, go through it and get an honest opinion, you know. Boy, they circle stuff and highlighted stuff, and this looks like something from New York City. I hate when we do that. And it's a small-town USA. If we're gonna have a committee. Well, see, what this does, it actually gives a person more flexibility on resolving a problem if there is one. Because rather than the chief go out and inspect the property and write a citation, they have the opportunity to talk to the committee and try to come up with a resolution to the problem before it ever goes to the police department. Well, if that's the case, then they should extend some of these timelines that are shortened. They take them from fifteen days down to seven.
No, no, it doesn't. If you look at the current ordinance versus the proposed ordinance, there's actually, in the proposed ordinance, it allows for the committee to extend beyond, let me find it here. I looked at this just a little while ago. It actually extends it to thirty days. No, that's not correct. Hang on one second.
Yeah, I jump back and forth and lose my place.
Yeah, I know.
Go from one to the next.
I hear that.
So see, the way it works, the committee actually specifies whether there is a violation or not before it ever goes to the police department. So there's a length of time that has been expanded there, like I say, to resolve any issues.
Who's on the committee?
It would be named by the mayor. The mayor would assign.
Oh, I thought you already had one.
No, not until we have an ordinance.
The way the ordinance is, the ordinance that we have in effect right now basically makes it a criminal offense right off the bat. Okay, so you're talking, you get a notice saying you've got X amount of days to remove the vehicle from your property. Otherwise, you get criminally charged. By this proposed ordinance, it sets a procedure in place to allow the civil aspect to take place before it turns criminal. So the way this would play out, let's say, I'll use fictitious names here. Joe Smith has three cars on his property that are deemed inoperable. They're junk vehicles, okay? The Property Maintenance Committee gets a complaint about Joe Smith's property. Property Maintenance Committee goes out, either as a whole or individually, and inspects the property, sees that there is a violation, and they have a meeting, and they bring the property up at their meeting and say, hey, Joe Smith has three cars that are junk vehicles. We need to notify him that he's got, whatever the timeframe is, seven, ten days, whatever it is, to remove those vehicles from his property, or show up to a hearing in front of us and explain why he has these junk vehicles on his property. Joe Smith gets a notification through regular postal mail and shows up to the hearing and says, yeah, I've got three cars, you know, one just died, two of them I'm working at fixing on. Can I have some extra time to fix them up? And then the committee can decide at that point, no, you know, this is the third time you've been in front of us. It's time that you get them out of here, or yeah, this is your first time in front of us. If you work with us, we'll work with you. Okay, so then at that point, the committee determines how long of a timeframe they can, I think it's a thirty-day, and again, I apologize, I didn't mark this in the ordinance. I believe you have thirty days.
Thirty days.
To take care of it, and then the committee can actually extend that at their leisure, okay? Let's say the committee, after six months, they've decided that, okay, Joe Smith hasn't helped us out at all. They, you know, he isn't working with us. Now he's not responding to our request to come back and meet with us to give us an update on what things are going on. Now something additional needs to happen. Further enforcement needs to take place. At that point, the committee would vote by majority, or whatever the solicitor's office would recommend, to pursue criminal charges against that individual, Mr. Smith, for not having, for not, sorry, I thought they were calling me on the radio. They, then the committee would say, hey, Mr. Smith, we've tried to do this, 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 and this for you to try to clean up your property, and you're not, you're simply not responding to us. So we need to take it to the next step, which is criminal charges. All the information that the committee has done has been forwarded on to the police department to me, and then I would go out and confirm that the property's still in violation, and then I would refer the case for criminal charges, and we would proceed with criminal proceedings at that point. Currently, as it is right now, I get a complaint about a current vehicle in violation. I can go out and immediately levy criminal charges. You know, serve them with a ten-day notice or whatever the notice states, and then after that point, they can go to court. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to give the residents an ability, a forum, to speak to their elected officials before criminal action takes place.
You blame it on us, huh?
Well, you guys are the ones that made the rules, so.
Yeah, that's why I'm debating about making that rule.
Yeah, well, I mean.
I don't hate to run into this comment and how many cars there are around town, and I can stand in my backyard and see at least five violations.
This ordinance has been in effect since two thousand, and you're absolutely right. We have a number of properties that are in violation. Last count, which was several months ago, was there about, there's about forty-five properties that had at least one unlicensed disabled vehicle on their property. So initially, yeah, there's gonna be a lot of legwork, but once, you know, once this mechanism's in place, then it will operate smoother. The mayor and I have consulted with regards to the current ordinance, and I think that perhaps, counsel, I don't want to speak for you, but you might agree that levying criminal charges against people that really, in most cases, aren't criminals, doesn't seem very right. I mean, we found that with the animal ordinance, and we found that with some other ordinances. So rather than go right straight to the criminal, the solicitor's office had updated the ordinance to propose and allow that to be presented for you guys to consider.
Well, that clears it up a little, and that's one committee I sure don't want to be on. And then others, things I really would like to, you know what I mean, but.
Does that apply to every place, every property?
Resident, every residential property, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct.
Okay, so commercial properties.
Luckily, you got your proper care up here.
No, I had to force the issue. I'm not sure if I understood this correctly. So you're gonna have a committee of three, and Nathan can come around and be nosy or whatever, look around, check things out. It's not gonna be like Jill, just because she works for the town.
Correct.
Okay.
Police department or one or all of the.
Okay. I just want to. One all decline also. I just picked on Jill because she's the least likely one to be doing it. But yeah, I just wanted to be sure.
Something like that has to be done in a professional way. Come up, knock on the doors, introduce who you are and why you're there and everything, and try to work with people right off the bat. You know, I sent a letter out, when did I send that out?
October, I think, last year.
Letting people know that the day is coming, you know, as far as we need to do something about the junk cars with bad people complaining, which a lot of them did do some things and got rid of them, moved them, done what they needed to do. But then a lot didn't, and probably feel, oh, I'm not going to till I have to. Well, the have-to time will sooner or later come, and we'll deal with it.
And since the last meeting, there have been, I think, three properties that have called me saying, hey, we've got these cars on our property that we don't want. They're not ours. They've been abandoned here. We just let them sit. Is there anything you can do about it? And yeah, the statute allows us that if a vehicle's been on someone's property longer than four hours, a property owner has the right to say, I don't want this vehicle. This vehicle does not have permission to be on my property. And after four hours, we can go out and tow the vehicle off the property. And we've done that on two in the last week and a half, and we got, there's another one.
But we're considerably more than four hours.
Yeah, more than four months. In some case, a couple of years, so.
And who pays that bill for towing?
What happens is the owner of the vehicle pays the tow bill. If they don't pay it, then the tow company will do a salvage title on it after the statute runs its course. I think it's after sixty days of someone not claiming, then they can file in municipal court, I believe it's municipal court, for a salvage title. It may just be, it may be county police, maybe county police, civil court, I don't recall. But they file with the court for a salvage title, and then the tow company actually takes ownership of that vehicle. Then they can dispose of it, use it for parts, do whatever they need to do.
And it can be a motorhome?
It can be a motorhome, yes.
Chief, I am going to make a correction. My reading of the ordinance, the property distinction only differentiates between private and public property. There's not a differentiation.
Okay, I didn't think.
For residential or commercial.
That's what, that's the way I read it, yeah.
Residential or commercial, so it does apply to any private or public property.
Which makes sense, because the statute does mention if there's a, again, these pages aren't numbered, as it was pointed out. One of these pages, it talks about a.
You talking about a commercial garage?
Yes, commercial garage.
Next to the last page.
Next to the last page, thank you. Okay, so yeah, if there's, if there's a commercial, storage by records, commercial garage, and record commercial garages, there's a section in there about that. So, you know, if we have a commercial, you know, commercially zoned property that has a commercial garage where they work on vehicles or things like that, then there's rules that they must follow, too. Such as, you know, in the event that somebody has a car lot, we'll just use that as an example, and they have an area where they maintain cars, then obviously, as long as, you know, following these statutes, then that's fine. Nobody would expect a car that is trying to be sold on a commercial lot to have to be moved every thirty days or anything like that. But if it's a junk car, if it's in a. it's a junk car, if it's an inoperable car, then even a car lot couldn't have it in there unless they were reclassified as a, as a storage facility or junkyard, which I don't believe, according to our other ordinances, we're allowed to have junkyards inside the corporation, so.
I'll make a motion to have a segregated ordinance seventeen dash four dash one, ordinance regulating junk and abandoned motor vehicles.
I'll second.
Miller?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
No.
Knox?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Harden?
James, what a new business.
I have a question for you, new business, before we get on that new business, is all right. Every town I drive through or I read the paper, everybody's having their spring cleanup, and we used to do that here, and I just went through Westminster, and they got one. Sutton says, "Time till the dumpster gets full." But there's a lot of stuff people like to throw in, one of-
Well, Fred and I have looked at that for the last three years. The cost of the dumpsters and so on, we was shocked. I mean, just went through the rough compared to what we did when we used to do it, you know? So we've been kinda reluctant on spending village funds for people cleaning up the yard and so on when they should do it anyway. So, that's, that's kinda where we've been at, because it was, it was several thousand dollars for the-
For dumpster?
For dumpsters, the amount that it would take to do.
The last one, we had it, and the trucks went around and picked it up. Wasn't that done on pound each?
They do now, the roll-offs are, some, yeah, some of them do.
We can, we can look into it again if you want, but-
Well, I've had several people ask me about it, but why we don't do that, I don't know.
Well, you know, I, I commend some of the other communities putting forth money and so on, but then, on the other hand, I look at it, a property owner should be responsible for taking care of the property. We shouldn't have to pay for it. You know, so there's a couple ways to look at it.
I agree.
You know, we do the, the brush pickup and so on. I mean, that, that costs the village money to have a person do all that, but, and in fact, that keeps people's backyard from having piles of brush all over town.
And you did the cleanups in the past, though. You, you didn't take anything and everything, did you? I mean, were there restrictions?
It, it was pretty much set up that-